Podium into the microphone. Comments made by phone or virtually our video recorded through the conferencing application. Please first state your name and address for the record. Jurisdiction in all matters pertaining to subdivision regulations, approval of subdivisions within the city and its planning jurisdiction, and to amendments, plan, unit developments, and located outside the city limits, this commission serves as the final authority. As to matters pertaining to historic buffer zone construction, our decision is subject to appeal to the city council. As to all remaining agenda matters, including original zonings, rezonings, planned unit developments within the city, and street vacation, this commission serves as a recommending body to the city council. In that regard, our decisions are in the form of a recommendation to be presented to city council, and the city council will make the final decision on those matters. Subdivision approval requires the affirmative vote of six members of the planning commission. All matters which are recommendations to the city council require a majority vote for an affirmative recommendation. At this time, I would ask, do any members of the commission have any conflicts of interest as to any agenda matters before us tonight? If so, please state for the record. Okay, having heard none, I would ask the staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest as required by law as to all matters for the commission tonight.
It has.
Great. Okay, with that, we will begin with approval. Do I have the minutes? Nope. Get the minutes? Okay. All right.
Wait. Yeah, y'all got them via, y'all got them via email.
We will begin with the approval of the minutes as the planning and zoning commission received the synopsis for the June twenty-three meeting. I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes for the same unless there are any deletions, additions, or corrections. Okay, all those in favor of approving the June twenty-three meetings say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. All right, we're going to go ahead with the consent agenda items. We have two. We have S forty-six twenty-three Downtown Rock Point Condominiums, S forty-seven twenty-three Hope Point Crisis Center. Does anyone in the audience care to speak for or against or hear more information about these items? Okay, having heard none, commission, consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
This one has already been with, continued prior to mailings.
Okay. All right, we have cases requesting withdrawal. We have Z eleven twenty-three, Mr. Cabbins.
Al, can you?
Al, we can't hear you. Yeah, a little closer to the microphone. Is it on? Can we get the, Haley?
It's green now. Is that better?
Green's better.
That's better.
Okay. Al Cabbins with Cabbins Engineering, representing Clay Smith. Clay came up with a different concept early next week that's enough different when Haley and I talked. We need to withdraw this and bring it back because we'll need to do pre-design. A whole different idea, but we still want to move forward. It's a, it's a great infield piece of property. We just want to get exactly what's right for that, so.
Both for Z eleven twenty-three and S forty-five twenty-three.
Yeah, both, both of those, yes.
Withdrawal.
Withdrawal, yeah.
All right, commission, we have a withdrawal request for Z eleven twenty-three and S forty-five twenty-three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll hear, I believe, from the City of Tuscaloosa concerning the Lake Nickel Harris project.
Commission, I'm Robert Martin with Duncan Kocher Associates. We received some new information late last week concerning this annexation. We need another month to work through, through this, and we would like to request to continue to the August meeting.
All right, commission, this is for the AN ten twenty-three, correct?
That's correct.
All right, commission force have a continuous request for AN ten twenty-three.
And Z thirteen.
And Z thirteen twenty-three, that's right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Denise? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Good evening, commission. We have one case before we jump into our Lakes Master Plan. This was continued from last month, so we need to get through our unfinished business first. Looking at S thirty-nine twenty-three, this is the Kennedy Mill subdivision. It's consisting of two lots on approximately twenty point one three acres, and it's located at seven twenty-five Kennedy Mill Road. This is not in city limits. Here's that vicinity map. We are just at the intersection of Old Birmingham Highway and Kennedy Mill Road. Zooming in to look at that site, highlighted in red are three lots currently. And here's that plat with contours and without. The site has been shifted a little bit to fit the screen. Now Kennedy Mill Road is running north to south. This is a two-lot subdivision, so they're taking those three existing, going to two, parcelling out this one acre, one, one point three seven acre lot along the highway there, and then leaving the rest. They're requesting a waiver from half-street improvements as well as cap sewer this evening.
Okay, engineering on the various requests?
Uh, we have no objections to those requests.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Tom Sims, Longleaf Engineering, four-three-two sixty-fifth Street, Tuscaloosa. I think this was pretty straightforward, just the two-lot subdivision, trying to create a commercial lot there along Highway two sixteen. I'm answering any questions you might have.
Seems pretty clear from my, any questions for, for the petitioner? I know we have some people have signed up, I guess, speak, so we'll.
Sure.
Let them speak, might bring you back up and answer those questions.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we have three people signed up to speak. First one is James Herring, Jr.
I don't know if what I've got pertains.
Please, please come up to the microphones, take your name and address for the record, please.
James L. Herring, Jr., eight-seven-five Kennedy Mill Road. And I don't know that I have any objections to the commercial lot. One time I got where it was going to be twenty-one residential lots, and eight or nine of them backed up to my property, and that's what I was going to address. And I was told when I came in that that would be a later meeting if they came back and wanted to make residential lots there. So whether I say what I've got or not now, it doesn't pertain to the retail lot.
Well, we'll let Ms., let the petitioner address potentially the future of the property if he has any knowledge, he might have any knowledge of it at this point, so he can address that here shortly for you as far as future of the plans.
Well, I was just told when I came in that it was just pertaining to the res, uh, commercial lot today, and if they came back and divided into residential lots, they'd have another meeting on it.
That'd be correct. This is just a two-lot subdivision. They're redrawn the lot lines, make it two lots. Correct?
So I guess I'm not opposed to the commercial lot on the highway.
Okay.
It's all the other twenty-one lots, homes I was opposing.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the next person is Myra LaCroy.
Myra LaCroy, seventy-seven hundred Old Birmingham Highway. I would like to know what kind of commercial lot, what's going to be put there since it joins up to my land.
So your, your property's the south here, I'm assuming?
My property is.
Looking up here. I see that, can you see the drawing up here? You're there on the right by the old.
Yeah.
The IR.
That way.
You draw her.
Ma'am, let's pull this up. All right, so this is the site that it's happening. Where's your property?
My property is right here.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Okay, that's good.
That's my property.
Okay. We'll let the petitioner answer that question again.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman, the last person is Janet Hudson.
Hi, I'm Janet Hudson, seventy-six thirty Old Birmingham Highway. My mother and I own this, the property that she just pointed out there. And like Mr. Herring had said, when we initially thought that it was for the subdivision, you know, of the twenty-something lots, that's what we had the concerns about, which we're still concerned about that, but we're concerned about what kind of business it would be now, you know, because like my mother said, that adjoins our property, you know, directly, and we'd just like to know, to know, but, um, I don't know, like I said, that we were here for the subdivision thing, so we were not aware, the, the paper that we got didn't say that it was being, um, you know, not, it was being changed, like, didn't explain that, so.
Thank you. Solid sign up?
Yes, they were correct in, in saying that we had previously planned to do a residential subdivision on the large piece. That may still come to fruition, but they have currently withdrawn it, rethinking their position and, and what they might want to do with the property. But of course, it would come back to you guys. As far as the commercial goes, they do not have a, a particular buyer at this time. They're, they're marketing the parcel for future commercial use and, and, and don't have a definite actual use for it at this time.
Can you, the, just draw where the one carve-out lot is, lot one on that, so I can, if I can see that. It's not in the city, here's the thing, it's not in the city limits, it's in the county, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for petitioner? Is there any, any hopes or plans to annex at some point? Is that in the?
I would have to consult the owners. I, I'm not sure if they're even in an annex, uh, zone, are they? I don't think so.
So you're telling us that this is speculative at this time?
Yes, sir.
All right, any, any other questions for petitioner? Anyone else in the audience care to speak for or against this petition? Okay, having heard none, we'll close. Any comments from commissioners about this two-lot subdivision? All right, commission force, we have S thirty-nine twenty-three Kennedy Mills subdivision. Two various requests, half-street improvements and cap sewer, city engineer has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second to approve?
Motion, second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 All right, commission, now you all are about to hear a presentation from Jason Walker going over the Lake Nickel Harris Lake Master Plan. That is before you all tonight.
Good evening, Jason Walker with TTL on behalf of the City of Tuscaloosa to present the master plan for Lake Nickel and Harris Lake. It's been a rather lengthy process when you consider COVID in the middle of when we started and when we finished, so this is, has gone on for a while in terms of part of the public engagement portions of this, both from a stakeholder standpoint, and then some of the boots-on-the-ground surveys and public meeting that we've had. But I, I'll go through this relatively quick unless you get to a point you want me to slow down some, then we can come back and talk through details because there's a, a lot of data here, a good bit of which will be for reference. Again, the, the general scope of work was to analyze existing Lake Nickel and Harris Lake, and again, I'll just say this, at some point, I'm going to say Lake Harris. We've all done it through the whole thing, and so officially, it is Harris Lake. We'll, we'll lump them together as Nickel and Harris, maybe be easier. But, but the scope was to look at these as the untapped resources that they are for the community at large, the city, and really West Alabama, to see what can become of these lakes. There's, there's a long history here, which we'll go through, just a little bit to help maybe give some context to the plan. But you can see on the right there, that's Lake Harris Lake at the south, Lake Nickel to the north of that, and the kind of purple line that borders that is the city limits of Lake Tuscaloosa. So you can see they're within and were part of an annexation to the city limits, and that is contiguous all the way to Lake Tuscaloosa except for some smaller parcels here or there. And they are part of dedicated parks as part of the City of Tuscaloosa. Couple of maps we can refer back to, but again, Harris Lake, that's Lexington Downs on the bottom left of your image. Those are, you can kind of see there's a, a firing range, but what has become an active, again, strip mining operation to the east or to the right side of Harris Lake, that if you saw an updated aerial on that, you would, you would see it's a pretty wide open area and pretty close to Harris Lake. But still, the adjoining areas, the areas that the City of Tuscaloosa has control of and owns are green, forested areas and relatively untouched, except for what you may be aware of at Harris Lake where there's an active recreational use, and then Lake Nickel. Lake Nickel bordered generally by anything from an infrastructure standpoint, on the left side by Lake Nickel Road, which becomes Watermelon Road, the entrance to North River, et cetera, kind of at that crossroads on the, the upper left side there. But to the east side of Lake Nickel, very undeveloped except for residential uses. We won't go into all this, but this is just interesting when you consider the context when these lakes were built, and this was when Harris Lake was originally built, and the reason these lakes were built, you can see taste from phenolic waste from numerous byproduct coast, coke ovens were periodically annoying. So it was annoying that they were drinking basically industrial waste out of, of the Warrior River. So in the late twenties and then in the mid fifties, Harris and Nickel were built really for drinking water sources, which were pretty soon after replaced late sixties and seventies by Lake Tuscaloosa. So originally, these were drinking water sources and still are functionally backup water sources for both raw water and industrial water for the citizens. We won't go back to this, but this again just kind of shows the area of where Nickel and Harris were constructed within what was probably one of three yellow creeks in Tuscaloosa County. This gives you an idea just of the magnitude, up, up or down, depending on what your perception may have been of Harris, Nickel, and Lake Tuscaloosa, the years they were built, the acreages, and the storage volumes in those. Just a few photos to quickly get yourself acquainted. This Lake Nickel, as you come in, there's the entrance sign to Lake Nickel. The property is beautiful, so is Harris. Nickel is a little less steep terrain overall, and probably overall has a little less of this type geology with a lot of these exposed boulders and things, but this is Lake Nickel, and there's a lot of that there too, that's really just pretty if you can find your way around the lake. Couple of shots, kind of eye level at the lake itself. Couple of points that Nickel's probably known for in terms of elevation adjacent to the lake. An old kind of landing area there going into Lake Nickel, and an existing city dock. And this is the spillway at Lake Nickel. Again, there's different photos of this, you can see some of these online, and it, this is one of the prettier ones, is it looks like a, a water feature almost, it's also become a graffiti haven, I guess. But when you look at, this was an old article from nineteen fifty-eight, and if you look down at the bottom, this is when the city council set aside some money for construction of restrooms. And that same restroom building, built in nineteen fifty-eight, is what is there now, but what is already on the city's plans to replace. That's, that's something that's come out of the plan, but really independently needs to be done. So there's a lot of, you know, underuse, which has become more used, and then just a lack of maintenance and, and lack of investment into the lakes, because they just kind of have been what they've been and use them as folks see fit, as just kind of passive recreation areas. But I can tell you, if you go out to even this point right here, and it was probably three weeks ago, my wife and I went out and, and took our dog, because it's, it's a nice area that's very gently rolling into the, the water for an aging lab to be able to get back and forth, but there were probably a hundred cars, three hundred people, a melting pot of the community with everybody, there was probably, I don't know, fifteen paddleboarders, three or four kayakers, fishermen, swimming tents, kids, seniors. I mean, it's, it's heavily used for what it is now with even those kind of restroom facilities. So the asset that it can be for the community that you can't maybe get on Lake Tuscaloosa, but you can get in a large body of clean, pretty water and be out there with your family and friends and do whatever, there's huge opportunity once you have it there and to bring some awareness to it. Harris Lake, again, built in nineteen twenty-nine. This is just kind of a couple of shots of the spillway, behind the spillway, standing on the dam looking back up the lake. And then again, you know, relatively, relatively unique dam structures that were a little modified over the years, but it's really pretty, especially if you're standing below that dam to see it. And this is at the outfall of the dam, a popular area within certain circles, I guess, that when the water's up enough, discharging from Harris, this kind of goes down this slick rock area, you can raft, and then you kind of end in this end pool where you see a couple of guys fishing right there. And then the old raw water lines that were part of the, that, they're still in use, but were part of the initial feed to get that water for drinking water. Briefly on public engagement, again, this was just a sample form of some visioning meetings that started really right when COVID was hitting. We had meetings scheduled that were ultimately canceled in twenty twenty of that year. As we geared back up, gave it some time, this is some data and just a representative, representation of data of some online surveys that were done just in general for users, potential users, the citizens, et cetera. Eighteen hundred responses. Again, it's not totally scientific, I mean, but depending on certain groups that probably were made aware of it compared to others, you started to get a feeling for, you know, who was probably completing the surveys. But, excuse me, you can see the data on the left of who was taking the survey, and then on the right of whether they listed themselves as a current user or proposed user, some of the things that they were interested, of which in review of that, you would see that the plan addresses a lot of those items, really probably addresses all of them in terms of the proposed users. We then subsequently had a meeting in August of twenty twenty-two at the Marion Phelps Center. It was advertised very well, the city's social media group got together, and we took further public comments and had a meeting just with some very initial concepts on the walls. This represents some of the data that was handed out just to give them some base information if they weren't familiar with Nickel or Harris. So this is the plan. Again, there's just another shot kind of of the spillway at Har, or the dam at Harris, which is a dam slash spillway, and some introduction narratively. So it's a bad map, it's fuzzy. We'll go through these, and if you, if I had this in person, it would be, you know, about the length halfway of the, the, the front there and, and, or hang ten feet from the ceiling, so it's really not as meant as much as probably a presentation, but we've taken it, put it into that presentation for you guys and tried to zoom up on some of the, the areas. So let me back up one space. It, it's divided into five kind of districts is what we call them, and as we go through that, you'll see the various districts, but the first one is this village district. So as you come in on New Watermelon Road, you can see right to the north, the entrance in the North River Yacht Club is to the left. This node right here obviously has the fire station, you can see the round, little building looking thing, the, the first orange round thing, that's the existing water tank. And again, keep it in mind, this is a long-term master plan. This is a twenty-five-year kind of vision for what all this can be. This is not proposed to begin in earnest, you know, assuming the plan's finished and approved in the next few weeks, but it is a roadmap, and it sounds like that there is part of Elevate funding that would initially fund some phases, and then it's dependent on future funding and champions of the project overall. But that intersection, as this, McRice Ferry is extended, that road project's completed, and there's more development within the area, even the Tuscaloosa Forward Plan would have had this being more developed as a commercial node with offices, recreation, and there's just some sample photos of what that can be. That's not extremely dense, it's all one-story, there's municipal complexes within this too, but it kind, kind of gives a feeling of arrival to this kind of lakes district overall. This is just kind of a little more of a zoom up of that area where this village green and some of these shops and things, as you come to the south, there's an entrance to the cabins and, and retreat lodge that you'll see recommended as part of the next district. So beginning on your left, coming to the right, that's where that entrance comes in from the main entrance there, just close to Watermelon Road, which gets into some cabins, and ultimately, which is probably one of the bigger ideas in the plan, is this retreat lodge. That's something similar from an educational standpoint to what a lot of folks would have seen in years, where a, a lot of kids from West Alabama travel to East Alabama and North Alabama for educational experiences, and in this case, to have a large municipal water source and lake, what's going on with water education and investment in the area with the university and the, the millions, if not billions, probably dollars spent in water research and so forth, there's an opportunity probably with partners at some point to further develop that. So as part of that too, there could be cabins over, for overnight stay, a retreat lodge for events, educational outreach, et cetera. Am I going too fast? Am I doing okay? Okay, doing good. Just north of that, on that same general area, there's an island. At one point, we actually had the retreat lodge shown on the island, which from an infrastructure standpoint was very complicated, but there's still something just really cool about that, whether it's for, you know, overnight stay or just exploration by elementary-age kids or church groups or, you know, whatever, family events and things, there's something there that would be based out of the retreat lodge to the south that you would come north and, and actually get to the island. So the next district would be the day-use camping district, and again, there's three we'll show on Lake Nickel. This is the third, and there'll be two districts on Harris Lake. So this is the area most commonly used right now on Lake Nickel as you come down the hill. This is in general the area where people are doing things, like if there was a beach, they would be right now setting up their chairs and tents on this beach, but it's kind of an eroded bank with a grass hill, and everybody seems happy. But how much better could it be with the improved restrooms, some shade pavilions probably for rent, and then to the north of that, along that kind of northern shore there, some tent camping facilities. There's a lot of questions, even during the public meeting process, about security and maintenance, and yes, for these types of investments, there would be added levels of security, and there would be required maintenance and daily operation of these facilities, but at the point an investment like this is made, then that commitment would also be made by the city to run it like it, it should be run. Some additional kayak docking, and so this is kind of a passive area overall on Lake Nickel. There's no, uh, there's no intense uses like you'll see more so maybe on Harris Lake in kind of a fun, louder type of plan. Little more of a zoom up on that. Dog beach, you know, a lot of comments of people, people, people love their dogs. Again, I was out there with my dog, so I, I get it, and having a dedicated place kind of separates some things, that can probably continue to grow in size as it's shown in scale on there, but there's a starter anyway. So coming back down to Harris Lake now, a group events district on this north end, and it's kind of hard to tell, I apologize again for the scale, but these things are just miles long. But on this north area, again, just an area to have right there on the water with a new vehicular access that would come from the north, that would come down and have that group events area with a main group pavilion, you kind of see an example of that, a what-if on the top right, added canoe kayak docks, and then a pedestrian bridge that, again, gets you back and forth across the lake, and doesn't take into account boat access that you would normally have, probably going back and forth. We can do something slightly elevated for canoes and kayaks, but this isn't made for skiing or motorboats, those kind of things. This would also be the head end of a zip line course. We've had a consultant, they came from North Carolina, looked at this, did a feasibility study, and it really sets up, if you've ever done any kind of zip line, and to, to add the element of both the elevation that Harris has and the water, a pretty cool element, and again, probably something operated by an outside entity instead of just city staff per se, but cool opportunity, different way to see the lakes. A little zoom up on that. And then lastly would be this active recreation district. We had an idea early on, and it, and it made the cut ultimately of this, this cable park. This is why, if you go on Lake Tuscaloosa now, it can be almost obscene, the amount of wake boats and ski boats and those things, and, and, you know, I don't know how much the boats cost, but it, it's tough to even get on Lake Tuscaloosa, but to have a place where you could come and theoretically learn to ski without a boat, and the cable pull you around in this area, there's places for onlookers, and it, it would bring accessibility to a water sport like wakeboarding, skiing, kneeboarding, that kind of thing. So a dedicated area for that, a really part, a really pretty part of the park on this peninsula of Harris Lake. This also kind of shows where the zip line comes back from the north, gets back into this area and circles back around. And then zoom up with that. This would be similar in size as if you were familiar with Oak Mountain was operating a few years ago. And then just a couple of images that just show, again, a rendering, architects running a perspective of the area at Lake Nickel that kind of shows that beach to the right, and just really making the trails nicer, added pavilions, a little better landscape, parking up the hill. Right now, there's a lot of parking congestion that parks right next to the lake, and it is convenient, but it's just kind of unsightly when you first get there and all the cars and everything going on, so to pull that back and have it out, this image kind of shows that. And this pulls away slightly further away, just from down the lake and looks back in that same direction. This swivels back from the north looking This swivels back from the north, looking back to the south at those same areas at Lake Nickel. So that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Dakota Witten too, with the city is here. So I know from a staff sample, he can answer questions as well.
It's from the commission. Obviously, this is very impressive. I applaud the efforts of the staff and those who led this. This is, I mean, you know, here a lot of times that people that don't have property in the lake, don't have access to Lake Tuscaloosa. And this is their access to water and water sports. So I think this is really impressive. I only had the crazy idea about the zip line.
I don't know.
Any idea on the zip line, Mr. Ramsey?
That was the cable park guy.
Yeah, I think this is, you know, it's clear you've put a lot of effort and thought into what would work and attract the kind of melting pot of crowds of ages and interest in such. I think it's extremely impressive. Congratulations on such.
It was a large team. We had, there was a subconsultant with us, barge, a lot of city input, a lot of stakeholders in the community with other agencies and things too. So we just kind of pulled it together, but.
It really seems to have paid off.
I think when Elevate came about, this was one of the good things that came from Elevate as far as public access, quality of life issues that Elevate was meant to bring. My only question is, how quick, obviously, and I know you don't know that because that hasn't been going to be approved. And can we do all of it? This is a big vision.
Yeah.
And I hope it's quick and yes.
Well, yeah, I.
I know you can't answer that.
I can't answer, but it's to give you some idea that that's roughly, if you did every single thing to the T, including things I didn't even touch on, like a lot of the trail development and security lighting, a lot of things, you know, it's probably overall a hundred million dollars. So, but the Riverwalk Master Plan in 2003, when it was first done, you know, you look at it, you say, well, maybe we can do one of these or this or that. And next thing you know, you look back 25 years later, 20 years later, and it all got done, so.
Obviously, this is going to be a phased project, we all know. And I would like to see as the city council goes through, y'all look at qualifying important phases, which would be the biggest bang for the buck first. So it's good. Thank y'all.
Anyone else's comments?
I hope this is going to be widely distributed and available so that people can start getting interested and excited about it.
I'm sure it'll be on the city website if it's not already and.
Yeah. You only do, get on top of the mountain, crow this project. It's really nice. I mean, people always worry about the Elevate, taking more tax dollars and this is the benefit of those tax dollars. So I hope that message goes forth.
This is going, this is going to grow, Mr. Harrison, but as you know, McRice Ferry Road opens up, this area is going to open up and it's going to be bigger. You're going to have all these subdivisions and things come that way as far as speed. Ms. Howard and I dealt with this on the council several years ago, so. As you know, you have to plan and plan and plan before it happens, but y'all have done a good job. That's what Elevate was for, like Mr. Harrison said.
You know, it seems like this may be one of the most exciting quality of life projects maybe in Elevate. I mean, it's, you know, there's so much talk about trying to retain quality workforce, graduate, University of Alabama, Shelton, Stillman, trying to recruit them here and then they take jobs and go other places. But sometimes just because some of these cities have these things and ever since Elevate was announced, you know, I think you did a great job, your team, your company, whatever. Obviously, it'll be expensive, but I think this could go a long, long way in retaining that age group of young professionals to keep them here and help us do economic development. I mean, it's just, I mean, you were talking about the lake. It is, it's very difficult. If a student brings a boat, then they have to launch it. It's hard to find a place for them to keep it. And then, you know, it's a lot of trouble to put a boat in and out, a whole lot. But that cable thing, you could, I could see where it would be such a draw for university students and much safer perhaps. I mean, I've seen, I've seen them and I've watched them on videos and stuff and it's just, it's just great. I don't know how expensive it is, but it's very, it'd be a great thing to have. And this, anyway, I think Lake Nickel and Lake Harris might be the couple of the best opportunities we have in Elevate to really do something substantial to. I mean, Lake Tuscaloosa might be the best kept secret in Alabama, but this, the accessibility of this project and how it can be used may be even greater than Lake Tuscaloosa.
Well, we can, you know, there's opportunity to be known as the water community with the Warrior River, Tuscaloosa, these and the Water Institute itself, the research that's coming into the area in itself too. So, yeah, there's rare assets. Anyone else comment or questions for?
I want to buy a cabin.
Yeah.
Or rent a cabin. So the first phase would be what in your mind? I mean, like, obviously, like Tim said, it'll be phased, but the first thing is just the infrastructure, road system and maybe the greeting lodge and I mean.
Well, that lodge would not be for, I mean, that's a, that's a hot ticket item probably, but like I said, the restroom building has already been, they've already hired, the design's rolling on a new restroom facility, low hanging fruit. And then just getting the things that are at Lake Nickel improved with some trails, some parking and some things like that.
So can you swim in it today?
Yeah.
I've had, it's been many years, but it used to be that when people came over here with Mercedes and they would say, okay, how do I utilize Lake Tuscaloosa? Where can I go and swim? You start thinking about it, you know, there's islands and there's boat launches, but that's awkward. But so you can just drive down here, I guess, and pay a fee or not pay.
Right now, there's no fee. There's no, I mean, and that, maybe that's one reason it's popular.
Someone just wants to sit in a chair and get sun and swim. I mean, it's hard to do it on Lake Tuscaloosa.
Yeah.
But this is, this is just fabulous.
So Jason, I think what you said, hitting the low hanging fruit is going to add the momentum to what you do on these next phases moving forward.
Yeah, and the first phase would likely be further funding for Lake Nickel where you, where everybody gets to Lake Nickel right now. But hopefully there's opportunity for, you know, corporate and private
Right.
contributions and development of certain segments of trails. That's not that expensive and there's not a very good trail network as it goes through, especially Lake Nickel. Lake Harris is so steep, you couldn't have biking. You could have, I mean, there's, there's places now that have three or four foot step ups on the trail because of the rock formations. It's going to be a tougher hike, but on Lake Nickel, you would hope to get a shared, it's not a true shared use path, but a mountain biking, walking, hiking, running trail around the entire lake.
That's good. It'll be good.
Any other comments or questions?
This is an item we're going to, let's table it for a month and let the public digest what they've heard tonight. If they have any question or comments, they can, you know, submit those. I think what, if anyone here cared to speak for or in opposition or have a comment about this proposal, I don't think we had anyone, but at least want to give the community an opportunity to put their thoughts and submit those if necessary. But we'll let it sit for the next month and then our plan is to adopt and then pass it on to the council.
Chairman, when is McRice Ferry Road going to be built? Do you know?
Probably a good question.
I think it's under construction now.
Is it? So is it in the next, in a year?
That's an excellent question.
Twenty months, two years probably. So it's been under work about two months.
You come across a new bridge, you can see the cut.
So the whole world can change with this and that, right?
Are we, are we voting to adopt this?
Not tonight. We're going to, we're going to let the public have one more.
One more shot at it.
One more shot at it.
I think you will need to vote to table it for a month.
Okay, that's fine. Is that, I'll ask the commission, I'm going to ask to table it for next month.
Motion.
Motion.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you, staff.
All right. Moving right along, we've got first companion case of the evening. It consists of a DROD and rezoning. We're going to begin with the DROD case. So we have DROD 423. Hope Point Crisis Center is petitioning to construct an 11,000 square foot addition to the existing building located at 2315 14th Street. This is zone BGO DROD as well as BN DROD in Council District Four. Here's that vicinity map. It is in the block off of 15th and Greensboro, just south of the Jemison Van De Graaff Mansion. And here is that site. Here's a view from 14th Street looking at it and from Greensboro. You can't miss it, that bright green roof. We've all seen it. Continuing on, those are the access points off of Greensboro. Looking at the DROD narrative, this petition is to construct an 11,000 square foot, one-story building, and it will connect to the existing building on site, which is roughly 8,600 square feet. The additional square footage will allow for short-term care, temporary observation, and additional staff support space. Looking at the architectural elements, they will be having large aluminum clad windows, brick and cementous siding and varying roof forms. Vehicular traffic will come off of 14th as well as Greensboro and they will continue to utilize that pedestrian access, the sidewalks that exist today. Those will be maintained. Meeting with the Architectural Review Committee, they found that overall it did meet the intent laid out in section 24230. And here is that site plan. So in the existing white, that is the existing building square footage, access points off of 14th, coming through here. Need to bring this closer. This parking space or this parking lot will be for staff. They'll be able to enter here and this will be an additional waiting space for emergency. This is intended to be utilized for an emergency drop-off. Then they could loop up, come back out here or enter through here, swinging down and around for another drop-off located here where I circled. And then following this loop out. So access point off of Greensboro coming in here. We following, this is all looks messy now. And then that proposed building highlighted in tan here will be that 11,000 square foot. And then getting into the renderings, here is another elevated site plan.
I'm happy to see the landscape.
Yes. All right. And here is that west elevation. So this is if you're on Greensboro, Greensboro is behind you. And then the existing building is shown here. And so from here on, that is new. And so they are keeping the architectural elements that exist, they're matching as well as utilizing the elements needed such as the aluminum clad windows, the metal roof and that siding. Here's the northern elevation. I believe this is the eastern, so if you're standing the opposite side of the block facing Greensboro. And then one more view. Any questions on these specifically before we jump into the rezoning? All right. Next up, we have Z1423. This is to rezone the site that we were just at. It's about 1.4 acres and they're wanting to rezone the BGO that exists that we'll look at in just a moment. We're in the same spot, same aerial view, but here's that zoning map. So what they're wanting to do, they're wanting to maintain the BN, which is the blue, and just change the pink to BN to match, to have a site. All zoned, neighborhood commercial. Again, here is that property. Neighbor to the west, Robertson Bank, and to the north, the mansion. And then this rezoning is to allow for the uniform zone post lot consolidation. This was part of the consent agenda as well. They removed some interior lot lines. So we'll be looking at this as a fresh one lot that we want to clean up zoning with. Looking at framework, it does conform to the plan. Framework identified this as downtown edge. And here's that future land use character map showing it's keeping with several blocks. And here are all of those permitted uses with NBN. Any questions for me?
Ma'am?
All right.
Any questions? Petitioner.
Hey, good evening, Commissioner. My name is Chandler Overcash with Ellis Architects. I'm here with Jaime Garza with Hope Point. He's the director. Our address, my address is 1490 North Bank Parkway, Suite 212. Wanted to touch base briefly on the overall development and just explain kind of how we got here. But before we get to this, I want to introduce Jaime, the director, and let him share just a couple of minutes about what this facility is and what it does and why we think it's a good fit for this location and this neighborhood. Yes.
Hello, everybody. Jaime Garza, the director of Hope Point, is associated with Indian Rivers. So Crisis Center is one of six that are being designated for the state of Alabama. Governor Ivy and the Department of Mental Health has wanted to establish these crisis centers to help alleviate the pressures off the emergency room and the jails, which are our number one resource for people with behavioral health issues. So again, and here in Tuscaloosa, we know that the pressure of DCH and what they're facing, we've been meeting with their CEO and all their, all their staff members, and they're really excited about this coming again because the emergency rooms are designed for people with physical health issues, not behavioral health issues, whether it's anxiety, depression, suicidal ideation, substance use disorders. Those are being handled at the hospital and they're also being handled at the jails where this can completely alleviate the pressure off of them, also with law enforcement, to get law enforcement back on the streets so they can do their job instead of sitting at the hospitals waiting with someone to get a medical clearance. So again, this is the, this is one of six that are being designated for the state of Alabama. And we truly believe that this is a great location since we are serving not just Tuscaloosa County, but Bib, Pickens, and a total of 11 counties in our, in our site of West Alabama. This is something that's been desperately needed in Alabama and we're really excited that the governor is putting a lot of money behind this.
What's the current capacity of, patient capacity now? And what will the addition?
Absolutely. So as of right now, we are planning to open up our Phase One, which is this first part of the building, which will house up to 16 chairs, medical recliners, where anyone can come in, university from Alabama student, anybody can walk into this location that is in any kind of crisis. We'll have 16 chairs and up to four bedrooms, so a total of 20 at any given time. With the addition, we'll be moving all those services from Phase One building into that new building where we'll have the same amount of chairs, which is 16, but a total of 12 bedrooms, or 12 beds for six bedrooms.
Just your curiosity. What's your operating hours?
24/7.
24/7.
So no matter what time the crisis is happening, we'll have staff which consist of psychiatry, nurse practitioners, RNs, social workers, peer support specialists, basically the whole, the whole gamut of services for people who are in need of services.
Okay.
Which is absolutely difficult to get here in Tuscaloosa.
Any further questions for Mr. Garza? Thank you.
And I'd like to piggyback and just say, in regards to the facility, when people are dropped off, they're admitted to the facility and they can stay anywhere from one day to seven days, but while they're there, they're a patient of the facility. And so even though they can leave voluntarily, there's not a come and go. They're, they're a patient and then they leave after seven days. And one of the things I like is they're not just taken home. If further care is needed, they're taken to additional facilities for longer term care. In regards to the DROD, the one thing we tried to do was maintain the existing building, which is actually not part of the current project, but does have an iconic nature of the green roof. Unfortunately, the property is largely just a sea of asphalt on all sides. And a building, I guess, to the left of this image, originally the plan was to reuse that building and after investigating it, there was no, no use and really no positive impact on the city. So what we decided to do is use the side street for parking for staff and then try to do a new face for this facility off Greensboro. So we had to pull off the road to reuse some of the existing driveway, which will be improved with curbs, with new topping, with asphalt and striping and landscaping. Here to the bottom on the corner, which is currently all concrete, we've cut out and we'll do all new paving and then all new landscaping to try to soften the corner. And then we've set back the new facility and given it a new facade that in a lot of ways complements what's already there, trying to bring it to an elevated status. There will be a future project to reskin the existing building to get it up to par with the existing, with the new building, be that brick, hardy, new windows if needed, and additional landscaping at that time. But we do see the majority of people coming in and off Greensboro. That is where we see patients and clients coming and utilizing the roundabout. And then again, we will connect the buildings.
Question on the, on the, you said the existing building will be reskinned later. Will those, that, the windows I see there, is that going to be in the initial phase or will that be in the later phase? The part facing Greensboro Avenue. I'm seeing like the renderings there.
Yeah, let me click. Yeah, let me click.
I think that, that has no current windows, does it, on that Greensboro face?
I don't know how I'm doing this. Are you talking about this portion of the building?
Yes.
That's all existing, and will be maintained for now.
The windows are there? Okay.
Those windows are all there, correct. I don't know, can you go to the elevation, the straight on of Greensboro? So the focus of this project will be from the existing building over to the right, the parking lot, and this new portion. We will meet all the DROD aspects that are possible, and we believe any of the, any of the ones that are listed, we will improve above the current standards.
So, when you were talking about the different potential uses or type crises that these, that it would serve, can you go over that one more time?
Sure. So you're, you're asking what type of crisis we can handle?
Well, I guess I'm asking in the context, and looking at the site, it sounds like a pretty wide array, and I'm just looking at the security of it, and the relationship with neighbors, and so, so forth. I don't see pincing, or a single in-out, or maybe there's meant to be, but I'm just wondering will it react that way?
I understand your question, so yeah, so when it comes to like, behavioral health issues, there's, again, there's a stigma of what that looks like, and that's something that we're trying to combat nationally. People don't want to go get help when they're depressed, or anxious, or suicidal, because of the stigma that comes with that. So again, with Hope Point, at any given time, a crisis can be anywhere from, you know, suicidal ideation, which just alone in the, in Tuscaloosa, we've had over 10 completed suicides, here in Tuscaloosa, and that ranges from, you know, adolescents to college students, so it doesn't affect just a certain population of people. So when we're looking for the type of crisis that's coming, it could be, you know, you're just feeling, you're just having a bad day, you lost your job, you need someone to talk to. What we have is called a no-wrong-door policy. It doesn't matter what your crisis is, you don't even know what's going on, we've had a, we did some role-playing with our staff, and one person walked in and said, hello, ma'am, what, what's going on with you? And they're just, I don't know, I just know something's wrong. So what we can do pretty quickly is on the, on the front end, we'll triage that person to make sure they're not having any kind of medical complications, so that if they are having some, some chest pain, we can get them transported to DCH pretty quickly, and have an agreement with them that get that patient immediately, again, with the intent of unclogging the ER system. But again, it's voluntary, no one can come in there against their own will, these are people who are already walking around campus, or walking around Tuscaloosa, so the security issue is already in play, because these folks are already walking around. The, the beautiful part about that, this is somewhere where they can go. If law enforcement encounters one of these individuals on the streets, they're just in the middle of the street, they're talking to themselves, they're talking, thinking that they're God, you know, that's not a crime, but that person is still posing a threat in our, in our city. So where can we take that person? Usually they take them to the emergency room, and they really don't know what to do with that person, so they just release them back onto the street. Or they'll take them to jail, thinking that, you know, keeping them, you know, isolated for a little bit of time will solve the problem, but again, they get released back into the street. So the security issue is that those people are already walking around town, this is a place where they can come to, and get the help that they need, the services they need, and then get some wraparound services, so that we can continue them on a path of treatment, so they can get better, they can get well, we can help them get jobs, we can help them get placements. Again, these are things that the emergency room are not equipped to doing at this time, they're just there to give it a Band-Aid, get them, get them well for the, for the moment, but what happens after that? With Hope Point, we have staff members that will follow that individual up to 90 days post-discharge from our facility, making sure that they're making their psychiatry appointments, that they're getting to their outpatient services. These peer support specialists that I continue to talk about, these are people with lived experience, people who've been in that person's shoe, and they can say, I've been where you've been, let me help you. And they will be giving them a call the day before their appointment, can you make it to your doctor's appointment? Actually, I can't, I don't have a vehicle, I don't have a way of getting there, and the problem where we see all these problems consistently reoccurring, is that people can't make their appointments, they stop taking their medication, and all of a sudden, it's the merry-go-round. So we want to stop that merry-go-round process by continuing the process moving forward, by getting them connected to the right services in their community.
Is there, is there a model of one of these that exists in Alabama now, that we can look?
Absolutely, so we have three right now that are opened, one is in Huntsville, which is Huntsville, Birmingham, and Montgomery. Those are the three locations that are open right now, the other two is Birmingham, Tuscaloosa, and Dothan will be the other one, but these are nationally, they have a lot of them, there's a place that we actually are modeled after, it's called the Restoration Center in San Antonio, Texas. And again, it has really alleviated the pressure off the city, off of law enforcement, off the emergency department, so that those people can truly just focus on what they need to focus on.
And I will say, having visited these facilities, the campus itself feels like an outpatient office, I mean, it, it's not a place of chaos, it's not a place, it's, it's a well-kept outpatient facility, is what it looks and feels like. And I will say, can you jump back to the aerial perspective? We have met with our neighbors Wells Fargo, and the property to the southeast, and they're aware of the facility, so far we believe them to be supportive, but the way we've, I'm sorry, the 3D aerial. The way we've designed this is to pull patients into the site, where they can park, and then we're using the existing entrance, so everyone comes into the site, and parks, and we're using this existing entrance right here, so everyone, our intent is to bring you deeper into the site, let you feel comfortable, and then make your way in as quick as possible.
Is that an open area?
Is that, ma'am?
Was that, the, the white area, the?
Left of the purple circle you drew.
Right here, this is, this is roof.
Okay, that's a roof.
That's right, it's just a flat roof.
What, what's in that building now?
Currently, Hope Point is in the building, and they're soon to be operational, and so they're already a part of the neighborhood. They're not operational yet, they're waiting on state certification, but they're already moved in, they've already renovated this existing building here, and pending state certification of four bedrooms, they will be operational, and so this is not about whether they should or shouldn't be in the neighborhood, they're already part of the neighborhood, it's about whether they can expand their services.
They had an, they had an offer, and they had to, so, so, called the neighbors, and it wasn't just, it was, it was, they said, this has been a grand issue to our neighborhood, they said, you hire to this, it's a problem as a magnet, they said, there are any, you say, you say, so you can't do a robot, so, so, he said, somebody might just walk in, you know, I lost my job, and that's going to have many places, I'm just, I want to make sure that everyone around, such as knows what is about to be in their backyard, is that, is that happening?
Yes, so again, in, so just saying.
I'm talking about a banker, the least, I'm talking about, somebody that just called in, can you go to the residences, or all of them?
There's some homes back here, there's some homes on the, on the other side.
23rd Avenue.
But, but we're not voting on whether or not this facility operates, and that's not up to us. That's not, I mean, we're not, we're not voting on approving how the facility operates, or anything else, we're just approving the, the construction and the zoning, I mean.
So, they're cleaning up the zoning that currently exists, it's BGO and BN.
BGO, theory, right?
So they'd be able to operate here.
Yeah.
So you're saying, you can, you can boost your medical facility, this, this zone, and you don't have to have, but why, why are you talking about?
I think, none, there's two there.
They've got a, they've got a mixed.
It's a two-phase project, the one on the left has already received a certificate of occupancy, and a business license, and they are pre-operational, only pending state medical certification. We're only here regarding the second phase.
I think part of, one of the questions we asked, Chair Vice Chair, was why, why are they, why, they can operate in BN currently, and they wanted to get a BGO, and it's basically just to make it the all, the lot all one zone, just clean up the zone, they could operate as is, as I understand.
That's right, and then also, you know, the DROD aspect, y'all are, y'all are approving the design, because it's in the DROD.
I, I had the opportunity to go to San Antonio, and look at that facility with a group, about three or four years ago, and seeing how this, that facility operated, and based on, that, that facility was a lot larger, and a lot more comprehensive, and it was a model facility, it was unbelievable what that, that center did for the city. The, per capita, in Tuscaloosa, because of, of the hospitals, and, and the things that the, the old prices used to do, and what we have, we have a pretty large population that needs a facility like this. And I, I will say to you, part of the facility that operated under this condition, you would not have a problem with, it was about as clean a run of facilities, I would say, and it bordered, there was, there was some, there was some residents.
But it was all positive?
Yeah, it was very positive, I mean, it's, it's a, I mean.
You understand my question?
I do understand, I, I do understand your, your questions, and I think, I, I think obviously with the businesses that are around it, and that front facing Greensboro, I can't see it impacting negatively, you know, it was a, it was a very positive, it's a very positive complex, very needed facility for Tuscaloosa, and it's, to me, it's slammed up.
Okay. And again, I just want to reiterate, we have spoken to our neighbors, and the residents, and the businesses, and I think almost nine out of 10 of them have had some kind of personal response to us being there, they've had family members who've needed crisis care, who've had, you know, suicidal thoughts, who've had substance use disorder issues, and they were just very relieved to know that something like this will exist in their neighborhood, where they can take their loved one immediately to us, and get care instantaneously, without having to wait several days, where that, that time can actually create more of a crisis, and can end up becoming tragic.
One of the questions I had was, you've got the existing building ready to go?
Yes.
And you're going to build the other building? You're going to build a new building?
Yes.
Does the old building that you've got ready to go, does it continue to function, so it doubles the amount of people you can see?
So that, the, the second building will definitely expand our bedrooms?
I, I didn't understand what happened to the first building, so it's going to stay operational, that was one of my questions, was, when you said 16 and 12 or something, I was thinking, we need more than that, so doubling the size, I was glad to see that, that was, I was confused, thank you.
So the 16 that's in the Phase One will move to Phase Two, so that both components are together, Phase One will then have expanded services, that they will then get into, some of it will be, is it the call center, some of it might be a game day room, where they can have sober units, so we intend to expand the services of the Phase One, but that's not part of this.
So reality, the capacity's not doubling by the new existing, you're just changing operations and adding additional services?
It goes from 16 to?
The chairs remain the same at 16, but our, our residents go from four to 12 beds.
Okay, so, yeah, eight, you, eight additional beds.
Correct.
Rooms, okay. Any other questions for the petitioner, petitioners? Thank you, anyone in the audience care, I don't think anyone signed up to speak for or against, is anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Okay, having heard none, we'll close for the public, you know, I, I understand some trepidation with something like this, but in reality, I think it's something very, very positive, and, you know, think about this, this is so close to downtown, I'm starting to see things, you know, homeless, and troubled people in our downtown areas, and this is actually pretty darn close to this, so it'd be a great resource for those folks, and real close to the soup bowl, so, I mean, people that need this type of service mostly, are very close to it already, so I think it could be a really, and obviously, the corner lot there needs to be cleaned up, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a kind of an eyesore as it is, so, those are my thoughts, I think it's a improvement and a good project, and hopefully it'll pay off huge dividends for the city of Tuscaloosa.
Lot from the first, rescue truck.
Any comments, or further? Commission?
I move, we approve.
Is that my motion?
Second.
Alright, I got a motion and second, for, this is for the DROD piece first, right? Alright, Commission before us, we have DROD 0423, Hope Point Crisis Center, constructing additional 11,000 square foot building at 2315 14th Street, and I have a motion and second, Ms. Hornsby.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Commission for us, we have Z1423, Hope Point Crisis, petition to rezone 1.4 acres, located at 2315 14th Street, from BGO to BN, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second, Mr. Rumsey.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved, good luck, gentlemen.
Alright, second companion case will consist of an annexation and a rezoning, we'll begin with that annexation. We have AN 0923, and this is to annex approximately 1.2 acres, located at 6615 Highway 69 South. Here's that vicinity map, it's just north of the Bear Creek and Highway 69 South intersection. Here's that aerial view, it's that T-shaped property, and they are requesting to annex this in, and further rezone it, to allow for the development of an office warehouse. Looking through framework, this was identified as a primary expansion area, which is a priority one, and whenever we're going through the annexation process, we have these eight points of evaluation criteria that we're considering while we review, and talking with other city departments, there were no issues, except Environmental Services stated that if this will be commercial property, it will require the use of a dumpster container. Jumping into that rezoning, we have Z1223, the Beaker Property Group is petitioning to rezone that 1.2 acres, from R1 if annexed in to BN. And again, here is where we are, and a closer view, and here's the zoning around, so they are requesting to zone to BN, which will match what exists today, surrounding them, and here's that site, it's going to be behind the gas, a little bit closer, it's this vacant And then to the north, you're surrounded by commercial, as well as the south, and again, this is for a development of an office warehouse, and here's their site plan, showing what that could look like. Looking at framework, it does conform to framework, it's identified as corridor or commercial, and here's that future land use character map, fitting with the BN that's And here are those permitted uses within the BN zoning. Any questions for me?
Ma'am?
Petitioner.
Commission, I'm Robert Martin with Duncan Coker Associates, representing Beaker Property Group, we are just requesting to annex and rezone to BN, for an office warehouse development, it'll be 10 units, ranging in size from 1,000 to 1,200 square foot, which will be used for trade operatives, like a plumber, or electrical contractor, something of that nature. Be happy to answer any questions you have related to the site plan, or the, or the rezoning.
Any questions for petitioner? I think it's pretty straightforward, cut and dry. Any questions for petitioner? Thank you. No one has signed up to speak for or against this petition request, but anyone care to speak for or against? Having heard none. Bring back up our, there we go, thank you. Let's start with our annexation, Commission before us, we have an annexation request of 0923, annexing 1.2 acres located at 6615 Highway 69 South. All those present say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, welcome to the city. Alright, Commission for us, Z1223, Beaker Property Group petition to rezone approximately 1.2 acres from R1 to BN, do a motion and a second.
Motion approved.
Second.
Let's go with Mr. Rumsey again.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
Alrighty, jumping into our preliminary plats for the evening, we'll start with S4823, this is Freckle Farms, it's consisting of three lots on approximately 23.23 acres, located at 12936 Old Marion Road, this is not in city limits. Here's the vicinity map, it's south of town, just southeast of Bobby Miller Activity Center, along Old Marion Road. Here's an aerial view of the property, and here is the plat with contours, and without, again, this is a three-lot subdivision, Lot 2 will not have any direct access to Old Marion Road, they'll be accessing through this easement. This easement will go down, and is a part of Lot 3, creating a flag lot for Lot 3. And the variance requests with this plat are for half-street improvements, capped sewer... And the variance requests with this plat are for half-street improvements, capped sewer, sidewalks, drainage study, as well as lot configuration.
Engineering.
We have no objections to those requests.
Thank you, sir. Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Marty Montgomery, Montgomery Hinkle Land Surveying, 203 Hargrove Road East, representing the owner and the developer in this three-lot subdivision, did a great job of explaining it. This is being divided around existing residential sites that already had three residences on it. One of them has been removed, but it still has the septic system and all there, and they just wanted to divide it up to sell it. Okay? Any questions?
Any questions for petitioner? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No one has signed up to speak for or against, anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Having heard none. Commission, of course, we have a request of S 4823, Freckle Farms, five variance requests, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes, motion approved.
All right, next we have S 4923, this is the resurvey of lots 24 and 26 of Eagle Cove Estates. It's consisting of one residential lot on approximately 2.78 acres, and it's located at 12310 Falcon Crest Circle. Here's that vicinity map, we are far up Highway 43 North. Here's an aerial view of the property. There's some remnant lot line, or not remnant, but there are two lot lines that exist within this, our GIS just does not capture that apparently. But here is the plat with contours and without. The lot line dotted there is the one that they'd like to remove, this came up, they wanted to build an addition, crossed a lot line, so here we are. And they are requesting a variance from capped sewer.
Engineering.
We're okay with that request.
Very much. Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Bobby Herndon, 2728 Burleen Wallace Boulevard in Northport. As she said, we're just taking two lots and making one out of them to expand on the house.
Thank you, sir. Anyone care to speak for or against? Having heard none. Commission before us, we have S 4923, resurvey of lots 24 and 26, Eagle Cove Estates, do I have a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion approved.
All right, and we have one standalone annexation request, we have AN 1123, and this is to annex approximately 0.84 acres located at 11623 Lake Nickel Road. Here's the vicinity map and the aerial view, this may be familiar, the subdivision was before you all just last month, and they would like to take that piece that was parceled out and bring it into city limits, it has an existing home on site, and they're surrounded by city limits across the street. They would like to bring that into city limits for city schools. This was identified as a future service expansion area through framework. As always, we evaluate these eight points of criteria, and speaking with other city departments, there were no issues, however, ESD, Environmental Services, they stated it's out of their service boundary, so they will not be able to provide services here. Any questions for me?
Ma'am? Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Bobby Herndon again. As she stated last month, this was brought before you guys, and y'all graciously gave us approval on this. The petitioner just wished to put Lot 2 into city limits, so the people there, there's an existing house there, and they want to go to city of Tuscaloosa school system, so they'd like to annex in.
Any questions for petitioner? Having heard none. We have a petition request for annexation of 1123, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, welcome to the city.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we are adjourned.
Oh, that was nice. Well, alrighty then. Been out working in my garden days, I'm...